And it is 1:30. Preliminary matters, agenda additions and deletions? Are there any?
Staff has none, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes from the last meeting, our regular meeting of May 16th. Are there any questions about the minutes as presented?
No.
No.
There was one word in the minutes reflecting a comment I had made about the, it was supposed to be "original" purpose of the zoning ordinance, and it says "regional" purpose, so the word "regional" should be changed to "original."
Do you think that it was on in particular?
I don't have it in front of me, but I remember, I figured Mark would have corrected it, so.
Page two.
Page two.
I'm in a hurry, I only read my comments.
Mr. LaFer, is your microphone on?
It's on page-
No, it is on now.
Yeah.
I told you I need you here.
Page two, near the bottom, I think, or?
It's the top.
Top third.
Right before the public hearing.
Would somebody approve the minutes after the correction? Any additional corrections?
Move to approve.
We'll hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We will now open the meeting up for public comment, so anybody who'd like to come for the council, please come up and swear, you'd be sworn in. Do we have to have anybody sworn in today? No, no swearing today. Just come up and you can speak. Please come to the microphone, though. Give us your name, though.
Yeah, I'm David Hunter. I live on 3702 Eagle Drive in Central Beach. And I know that you're going to be addressing the boarding house problem that has been discussed a lot over on Central Beach. And I wanted to just ask you to consider as well, and maybe wrap yourselves around this second issue, which is transient rentals by residential properties. The same type of situation as boarding houses, except that the people are renting out by the day or by the week, not in accordance with our city code, which is that they have to have at least a month-to-month rental. And in Central Beach, this is becoming a problem, and it's becoming a problem all over the state. Sometimes they use the dressing that it's a vacation home rental, but in fact, it's transit rentals. They come in for a couple of days, there's five or six cars there, 10 cars. I had a situation at my house that I've been working with planning and zoning enforcement on for a year and a half, and they're still renting out. They even publish it on a website and a calendar, and with comments sometimes about how pleasant the stay was. And some of the people that are staying in these houses, you know, it's a group, maybe a college kids, eight or 10 people all at once. This last week, or two weeks ago, we had three different couples all living there, and they had a big party with eight or 10 cars on the weekend. And planning and zoning knows about it. The only thing that they can do at this time is to fine them $50 after substantial length of time. This house was only given a fine after a year and a half of investigation. And in the meantime, they were renting it out for $2,000 a week. Now, what kind of a deterrent is a $50 fine for a $2,000-a-week benefit? And of course, it doesn't happen very quickly. In fact, the code enforcement person had to literally catch the tenants in the house and interview them because the owner was lying and saying that they were relatives. So this is a real problem, and it's similar to boarding house. In fact, there was an article in the Palm Beach Post just a couple of, maybe last week, and it talked about, "I wouldn't move to a nice residential neighborhood on the beachside if I knew that I was going to have a Motel 6 running next to me." So keep that in your mind, that this is like allowing Motel 6s to operate with people coming in and out, strangers that you don't know. There's no such thing as a neighborhood when you have strangers coming in. So anyway, it's the same type of problem as the boarding house. It's a short-term transit rental situation. And I hope that you can get the board to address this in terms of our statutes and in terms of even augmenting the penalties, because that penalty was probably set 25 years ago, and it might have been something then, but now, under this scenario with $2,000 a week, a $50 fine is a cost of doing business. It's not going to deter anybody. So anyway, that's all I'd like to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I understand your problem. Is one way to get these people, or do you know whether they're paying the appropriate tourist taxes and things like that?
Well, it's an interesting question. I doubt it. Although this is being run through a licensed real estate broker, Bill Waterman, this particular one, and a licensed contractor, David Rustine, who are advertising this under a Florida Vacation Beach Rentals and Florida Vacation Home Rentals. And they actually mention this as a commercial activity and accept credit cards, but are they paying taxes? I don't know, but it would be prima facie evidence that they're also breaking our code law if they're paying taxes. So I doubt if they're paying taxes.
Well, you have to pay taxes on less than six months.
Right. And in this case, vacation tax, which would go towards our beaches and helping it, that would at least be in the right direction. But I don't know if, and I don't know if anyone's investigating whether these online vacation home rentals, even though they're located right here in Vero Beach, the offices of Waterman and Rustine are here in Vero Beach, whether they are paying vacation tax on the rentals that they're running. But they're running illegal rentals because these are in violation of our existing zoning law.
Tim, can I ask the question? Will this come up under the, will it be included as a separate issue? Is it a separate-
It's a related issue. It gets back to the enforcement issues we have with all this, but let me set the record straight. The Florida Legislature has tied our hands in this stuff.
I understand.
I'd love to be able to get into the code and make changes in there, but we have to go by what was in place in July of 2011, which was, in our ordinance, it specifically said you can't have, we have a guest in transit quarters, which is only allowed in commercial, everything else. And the month is what we use, because that's within the state statutes. We can't really do any more fine tuning on it, or we'd be in violation of the Florida statute. So we have to go by what we have. In these specific situations, in this case particularly, we've got a fine, these people are paid to find, that means when they pay the fine, that means they admit to guilt. And from now on, if we catch them doing it, it's going to be $100, and it's going to be per day. And if this continues on, we certainly have other actions, even an injunction. So, I mean, it takes a while to build this up, as the man said. We had to actually get in to interview people to do this. I've only got a staff of two, and these are all done by complaints. We have to follow due process. We've been discussing it with the city attorney's office to make sure we're doing everything kosher here, but it's one of those things, without harassing people that come into town, just because they're advertising is not prima facie evidence of violation. We have talked to both the state, the county clerk's office, which handles the bed tax fees. We also talked to the property office, dealing with homestead. We believe this house may be homesteaded, so we've turned over all the information we have to them to follow up on this. So that's what we try to do as a staff, but you have to understand, unless they give us access to the building, be able to talk to people, I can tell you, and I was going to go through some of this in the boarding house-
Tim, can you turn your microphone on?
I apologize, yeah. I had turned it off so I wouldn't make any comments. Here I am. I can tell you that people get coached on what to say through this kind of thing. So we were, the ability of our code enforcement officer, she was able to get one of the tenants, the short-term tenants in there, to say how they came in there, how long they were going to be there, and we have that on the record, and now we have something that we can use in this specific situation. But it is difficult on these things. As I said, we not only have the state law, which really makes it difficult for us, but we have to work within the purview of the due process and all that. And we, as I said, my staff follows closely with our city attorney's office on this kind of thing, trying to keep us out of from a legal problem, much less treating people unfairly and getting into harassment on them. And that's, I hope that answers some of what- Well, Tim, I don't understand why we can't, with locally licensed people who are advertising something in violation of our ordinances, why we don't have any ability to deal with that. Because we don't have anything in our regulations that says it's a violation. Now, in Monroe County, we were able to get an ordinance in place that basically would have made that a violation. It is more difficult unless the real estate agent is actually handling, or the broker is handling it, for us to bring a violation up. Because just advertising doesn't mean you've committed an offense. It is something that, under the state law, you know, in their definition, that certainly on the DPR, they have to be licensed because they are a transit residential. But this is difficult when you have an ordinance that doesn't go into all this. We can't just make it up as we go along and bring these kind of, so, but we do the best we can. You mentioned that the state has handcuffed us making changes to- Yes. We cannot treat- Could you explain that a little bit to me? Well, the state has come in and basically states that we cannot, you cannot enact any regulations after, I believe it was July 2011, I think that's the date, that would treat vacation rentals, which are these short-term rentals, any differently you would do any other residential single family, yes. And if you all recall, the county went ahead trying to clarify their ordinance, and what happened is they ended up legalizing all this. So the county has no prohibitions against that, so I'm just telling you, it's a difficult situation, we're doing the best we can.
I understand that completely, but you know, we're a charter city, and can the state legislator-
Yes.
Can they have that authority over us?
Yes.
It's not been challenged?
No, it hasn't been challenged on that. I mean, and that, I won't go any further.
Mr. Chairman, I told you that the advertisement wasn't any kind of prima facie evidence. It seems to me an advertisement can be considered an offer, if the offer is accepted, the practice is taking place.
That was under, our city attorney told us this, and as I said, most ordinances write in that that's prima facie evidence of violation. That is put in your ordinance. We could not put that in our ordinance, right?
Wow. I don't know. I don't understand why this hasn't, over this period of time, why this hasn't gone to injunction.
Because we're being very careful of how we're approaching this.
Well, we're not being careful for the neighbors, you're being careful for the criminals in this case.
I would hardly consider this a criminal act, but I mean, but we have to be this way. I mean, we've got probably vacation rentals all over the city. We're under a complaint basis. We've got a lot of vacation rentals that are probably out there that are not being, because they're not creating the problems that are so obvious with some of these, as Mr. Hunter pointed out, in this place. And we've had some others where it's very obvious something's going on there, because you have a ton of cars parked out front and a lot of garbage and all that, and suddenly they're gone, and you have all these different people coming in. So, I mean, I can understand your concerns. We're doing the best we can under what our circumstances are. Now, Mr. Komet will be here later, so we can discuss it in a little more detail. Not being an attorney, I don't want to get out there, but we've been being very careful on this to build our case. Noticing that most laws are litigated over time, that I've always had the opinion that there are two kinds of lawyers. There are yes lawyers, and there are no lawyers. And if you want to accomplish something, you get a yes lawyer to tell you how you can do it. And if you don't want to accomplish something, you get a no lawyer that tells you why you can't do it. And so I think in this particular case, maybe we should find a yes lawyer to tell us how we can do something to get control of the situation. I think we're out of sequence here. We should continue with our public comment. Let that be completed, and we'll get into the particular issues. Anybody have any problem with that? Because I think we're talking about what we're going to be talking about later, and let's not do it out of sequence. You're up, sir.
Good afternoon. My name's Paul Amos. I'm from O'Hare, Quinn, Kenler, and Castellino. We're located at 3111 Cardinal Drive. I don't want to take you out of sequence any further. I am here regarding the Banyan matter, which is the boarding house issue as well. You've obviously already addressed several of the issues which I was going to bring up. Our matter is more along the boarding house situation. My understanding is, and I believe Mr. McGee is very, very well aware of our case, that there are actual separate lessors in this, or less, yes, lessors in this particular home. There are individual locks on individual bedroom doors, there are individual allegedly verbal leases for each one of the bedrooms. Our firm has been brought into this because of the immense amount of traffic which is happening. There's automotive traffic, there's at least four cars parked in the driveway yard area and on the right-of-way, and on the weekends, that's approaching eight to 10 vehicles. That's obviously, and Mr. McGee did mention that exact number earlier, I imagine he's probably referencing this particular property. That's causing an immense amount of unhappiness for our clients, because basically, they've got a residential home that they've invested a significant amount of funds into, they've improved the property, and when they open their doors on the weekends and see 10 cars and various motorcycle trailers and various other things parked across the yard in a haphazard fashion, that's problematic, and they're very concerned about it. Obviously, we're very interested in seeing what the board is going to be able to do as far as interpretation of the various statutes, the way they are. We understand the case law and the various ramifications with the definition of family, for families that are occupying these units, but under the circumstances, if we can investigate something into the parking aspect of it, to be able to do something with parking enforcement, I think that's a good start. Anything that we can do as far as insurance regulations to require, you know, require proof of various types of insurance. These people have come out and made admissions that they are in fact occupying the premises under this particular circumstance. I believe being a direct violation of the statute as it is, we just need to be able to determine what the enforceability of that is, and as a neighbor, what steps you'd like us to do to be able to assist you in going forward with all possible speed. It is a situation that the neighbors are very concerned and would like to proceed in any way possible, as correctly as possible, you know, under the ramifications of the case law that Mr. McGee has already referenced, but also to try and stop this type of thing from becoming rampant throughout Central Beach and in their neighborhood. I appreciate your time and opportunity to address the board.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick one.
Yes, sir.
Do you need, can't you go around the city on this? Can't you make a direct, take a direct civil action against the landlord in this case?
We're investigating the possibilities of that. Someone had mentioned possibly an injunctive act at some time to abate a nuisance. It's one of these things, generally, that's done with code enforcement, but it's one of those things that's not been taken off the table, and we are discussing it with our clients to see what alternatives we may have. We're interested in stopping this as soon as possible, as immediately as possible. And, you know, we don't want to redo the efforts that you're making to go forward. Obviously, it would be the correct time and expense for my client as well if we're doing the same injunctive action. So if that's something that you may be considering, or the city may be considering, if we can determine that, then we'll participate as much as we possibly can. If you need any information from us, obviously, we'll become available. It's, we're investigating all of possible avenues to get this thing resolved as quickly as possible.
I was just thinking that we're learning how slowly the wheels of government turn, and if you want to put a stop to it, I wouldn't hold my breath, because you'll pass out.
As a former prosecutor of several years, working with the local state attorney's office, I realize how that works, and I will do my very finest to see if there's another avenue. We've definitely looked into that. I've been doing research on it for the last several days myself. So if we can find an avenue to do that, not only will I be pursuing that, but I'll notify you of the steps that we plan to take.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Anybody else in the public would like to make any comments? Please come forward now. If not, we'll close the public hearing. Tim, I think we're proposed work program priorities is the next on our agenda. Yes, I think, Mr. Chairman, we discussed this at the last meeting, that we've been kind of switching around, so you asked me to kind of put together a list of projects, and I don't know if that's how you wanted me to do it, but it pretty well, I thought I'd spelled out based on what I thought would occur over the next two years. I made it for two years, with the caveat, we are going through a budget process, so that may affect it, but, you know, I think at least for the next year or so, we're pretty well, we'll try to beat this schedule. If there's anything you would like to see at a higher priority, or something we're missing, we certainly would like to hear from you on that. Let me ask my fellow board members, is the priorities agreeing with your priorities so that we can, Tim, to correct them a little bit if we're out of sync?
Well, I'd like to see them fleshed out a little bit, like, for example, amendments to POI regulations. What are we talking about? What kind of things are being considered? So, like I say, adding a little meat to these bullet items might be helpful in the cases where they're not clear.
Okay, I certainly could do some of that. I mean, we've, I don't think that's a real big problem. We could identify some of the issues that we- Bring it in a little more detail. In a little more detail, yes. I don't see-
Examples, that kind of thing.
Well, I think we're right on, we're starting, I think it's pretty mull in line. I didn't know why Osceola Park fell so far down from Original Town. That was a question of my part. Was it because they are not quite prepared to come at this time? Or I thought we'd do those in ten- No, because your planning director hasn't written it, and I haven't gotten to that point. And I've been waiting, I was going to get in a little more discussion where we're at some of these, when I get into my planning director matters, but that's why I've moved it down, I just cannot get to it. With that in mind, it seemed to me, from what we've heard so far from the two communities, that Osceola Park and Original Town have a lot of the same issues and want to go to the same place. Therefore, are they somewhat compatible in what we're doing? They are different. Because Original Town's more under an assault from the standpoint of non-residential land uses. Osceola Park has other issues, but they're not this wholesale conversions of, you know, with non-residential development. That has not been a, I mean, it is an issue, but it's nothing that approaches what Original Town's been going through. So that's one reason I've kind of put that as second of the two that we were doing.
Are they under a current assault, or a past assault?
Well, you mean, it hasn't been, it is really, yes, over the last few years, we really haven't seen, but when I say assault, I'm looking at the last 10 years, they've had a lot of changes there, but you're right, today, we have not had a lot. I'm not getting proposals in to do, you know, wholesale changes.
That's what I would call an assault.
Right. Well, I apologize to give it that, I was giving some impetus.
I have a question. I'm just looking at the medium priority under, on the second page, that the LDRs to incorporate wetlands and aquifer recharge protection. Is there a reason why that's medium, where the septic tank regulations isn't first?
Well, it's medium because the septic tank was directed by Council of Do-Right-Away, and it's lots, it's really in some way, I shouldn't say simpler, but this one is more comprehensive things it'll be in addressing. The other thing may be politically more difficult, but that's why I did. The plan calls for that, and we have not done that last few years. I was going to try to address that when we did the last storm drainage amendments, and you'll probably see it come back on that, in that area. So that's the only reason I did it that way.
Okay.
Anybody have any additional questions? So, Tim?
Nope.
Ready to move forward, accept that? I think it was helpful, Tim, thank you. It was to me, and at least we kind of know what to expect coming down the road. The next item on it is Planning Department Matters. And I think you'll take that, Tim, correct? Yes, I was going to give you an update. I just talked to Linda Hillman with Original Town this morning. We had a miscommunication. Linda was waiting for my call, and I thought I was waiting for her call. So we're going to meet on Monday, so hopefully we're, I'll be able to get back with you and see when we can set up a meeting to go forward on that as you requested. Been working on the amendments to the tree ordinance, as we discussed at our last workshop back in May, and after a long review of that, I think we need to move the mitigation process, meaning how much you have to mitigate for removal of trees. I think we need to make it more of an administrative process, meaning let's get it out of the quasi-d judicial process, but with that regard, in that regard, we need to have specific criteria and a methodology that somebody comes into process, they know how much they're going to pay based on this, that there is no, you know, a waiver process where you come to the staff and I make a decision, or you come to you and you make a decision. I find we don't get consistent results out of that, and I think, I think the important thing is for you all to say, "Yes, Tim, I think this process looks fair, let's make it work," and you can set the process, and we will follow that process in that. And it would be much more certainty for everybody that I'm going to have to pay $1,500 to remove this many trees. They're not going to say, "Oh, well, I'm going to see if I can get them down to, you know, $200." And I've got some examples. I've sent the draft over to Nanette Haynes, who handles our grounds and everything, and Nanette's our tree expert in the city, and to get her input before we would schedule a workshop, so I want to be sure that she's on board, and I'm sure she'll have some good things we can add to it, and some corrections that I may have made or omissions in that. So I just want you to be aware. So it is fairly, it's fairly a different change, but I think it's, after going through this and after the last meeting we had, I really think this would be the best for everybody involved, and for the applicants and the city. Tim, I have a question.
I thought, Tim, during the last meeting, when you were handling it administratively and leniently, because it was already a heavily wooded lot, that maybe you argued just the opposite.
Oh, well, no, I think if you put the proper methodology in there, and for instance, I have an example of the Poitras Road one you did. And basically, you know, and I'll show this all to you, basically, if you followed the ordinance to the letter, without the waiver, he would have had to pay about $13,000. And I think I ended up charging him 700 or something, I forgot, or 500. But, you know, that was based on, because most of the other trees are outside, but I don't know if that's a fair thing to do. And I looked at another decision I made, and that decision was a little different than that one, based on the trees. So I think the process, whether it's done by the planning staff or done by you, is subject to too much discretion without getting into specifics. And I think that's what we need to move to do then. And I've got a process that basically looks at the trees. For instance, if you're in the, outside the, in the building setback areas, then, you know, you're going to have to pay for that. That's going to be mitigation, because you should be able, try to avoid that. But the rest of the, we'll look at the tree cover and the percentage on it, and have some sort of reduction factor that goes into that based on, you'll have a schedule, you'll go down, got to mitigate this much, and you can either do it through replacement trees or payment into the, in the tree replacement fund. So those numbers are all subject to your evaluation. I'm going to try to have you enough examples so you can see how it was applied and whether it's fair. I mean, I think it'll work out better, and based on what I did on this individual, applying the new formula, he would have paid around $1,400 on that property for those trees. Now, whether that's fair or not, I think that's something for you all to look at, but I'm just saying, I think there's, we need to have something that people know for some certainty what they're going to pay, and they're not up to the whims of either you or me to make that decision. Even if we're looking at all these factors, it's, a formula is better than those kind of factors, which are still too discretionary.
Is this something that we can crib from another city, or is this something where we have to reinvent the wheel?
Well, when I say, you say crib for another city, yes. Other cities use some of this percentage kind of thing, but ours is different. We just have a different ordinance. It's different than anything around here. I mean, the county, I don't even believe the county requires mitigation on trees on existing lots, no. So, I mean, and I looked at Indian River shores, and yeah, they have mitigation, but it's so wide open that you could, you don't have to do a lot of mitigation even under that. So I think this is, I think a process that somebody knows what they're going to have to pay coming up front makes sense. The only thing, we may want to put a provision in there for hardships, which I think, we do get cases where somebody has really got a problem, and the question is, you just need to have some requirements for what has to be looked at for a hardship. But other than that, I really suggest we go this route. A lot of communities have those kind of specifics rather than, but others have a lot of discretion in there, and they're either leaving too much discretion to an administrative officer, such as the planning director, or you've got a board who is put in a position may make inconsistent decisions based on these waivers. And I just don't, I don't think that's the best for everybody involved, and I always have a problem having a public hearing on these, a quasi-d judicial hearing on something like a single specimen tree or something. I mean, you have to look at that. Is that really of the public interest? I have a problem there. And- Tim, I would like to take a different approach. I don't quite agree with you here. Okay. And my disagreement is in that discretion, generally, I find is not good in the law, to have too much discretion, but in this case, nature planted the trees, the people can try to work around, but I think, I think we need some discretion, not to penalize people for trees that they can't do anything about. One person buying a lot may find all the trees in the middle of the lot, another person buys a lot next to it, and the trees are all on the peripheral of the lot. One man may be penalized heavily. So I think some discretion should be used, and it's not so cut and dried that some big dollar amount, where then we're starting to send values of lots, because the trees in the middle lots are, you're talking about $13,000 as a penalty. I don't think, before you kill the baby, before you see- I-
I'm not going to kill the baby yet, but I'm.
You're going to see the percentage reductions on it. We'll take a look at it. I think we can, you know, I think we can take into your concerns in the actual schedule itself. But until you see that, because I'm talking about significant reductions, and depending on how much on that. But clearly, with trees in the middle of the lot, we can also look at ways that that can be reduced when it's in the middle of the lot as part of the formula. I just put together something for discussion purposes. I don't, you know, it's still subject to you. You need to buy off on this, because if we go to administrative process, it won't be coming before you, and you need to be sure that it meets what you feel is in the public interest be.
Well, the public interest here, I think, is what I'm looking for. And that is to save as much of our tree canopy as possible and doing as many things to accomplish that. It's not a revenue enhancer. If it's a revenue enhancer, we can do that. I don't think that's what it's about. And I think therefore, when we give as much discretion to the people to try to do different type things and alternatives, I think those help, whether it's moving trees, and there's all kinds of things you can do. But, and I'm open to your.
Well, no, I think you need to look at it, because I went in, and I know we're getting bogged down in this discussion, but I did look at ways that we'd give more credit for existing trees being moved on a site and all that. I threw it out because I thought it was too complicated, but certainly we can look at those kind of things. I'm not, I'm not against it. I just, we need to get something out there. I wanted to make you aware that I am taking a more, I think, a very proactive, stronger approach than what we talked about, so you're aware of that. But we can get into those kind of discussions, and why don't we wait for that time, okay? Because I, I think your concerns are well founded, and we need to look at that.
I'd like to just give you a little guidance at this point. You mentioned reducing the fines or the cost of mitigation. And I just don't want to get to the point where, like, like the first speaker was talking about, where you get $2,000 a month and you have to pay a $50 fine. We saw a few years back, thousands of acres of lots being clear cut in the county. And they put a little twig up front, and that satisfied the thing. Or maybe they paid some very minor mitigation fine. So I know that's not the way you're intending on going, but I just want to guard about, guard against.
No, and I understand, but I would say that that gentleman having to pay $13,000 to cut his trees down on that lot, I think that is subject to some challenge. If I were, I think you're, you know what I'm saying, that's going a little beyond what we intend to do here to protect trees.
That's right.
Or a little beyond, a little, much more than a little beyond. But I do believe they should, we should be mitigating and paying into either onsite replacement or paying into a fund.
I think you still have the lead.
Do I have? I thought I lost it. I believe that takes care of what I had to say.
I think we're now, we'll get into the chapter 62. Is that correct?
Okay, well, I guess, do we, I think we adjourn before we, to go into workshop.
Okay.
If you don't have anything to say.
No. Yeah. Does anybody have any additional board member matters?
Nope.
Tim, the last time you had mentioned that we were going to be looking at the future land use map for property in back of, like, the old school that was there. Is that going to be coming up?
I'm sorry, in the Osceola Magnet, what school are we talking?
The Osceola, yeah.
I don't recall saying that. There wasn't.
Something about the kite development there?
Oh, no, no, no. That is, that's all related. You're talking about Sixth Avenue. We're talking about the planned development. That is part of what has been involved here for the, for the.
Okay, I was just curious if that's going to be added to our priority list.
Well, it is on your priority list. If you look under there, let's see. Amendments to LDRs to authorize planned developments in certain commercial districts, number two on the list. You see up front on the high priority?
Okay, on the high priority, okay. Okay.
Okay, since I have a draft here in front of you, you know we've moved along on it.
Thank you.
Any questions for, anybody have any board matters to bring forward?
Nope.
Then I'm looking for an adjournment of the official meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're so adjourned. We will immediately now go into a public workshop discussion in regard to the, a planning development ordinance. Basically, it encompasses chapter two, chapter 62 of non-residential districts. And should I read any part of what we're doing here? You don't have to, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
That's, the Plan Development Ordinance is A, and the Boarding House is B. Maybe we should have a show of hands on who in the audience is interested in A, and maybe we want to flip those.
I'm open to that, if that makes sense. Tim, does that seem to make sense, doesn't it? More people can release?
I don't think there's a problem looking at.
Is there anybody here for the Plan Development Ordinance?
Repeat, what were the A and B?
A is Plan Development Ordinance, which is a highly technical thing. And B is the Boarding House issue.
How many people here would like to speak on the Boarding House issue, or have some interest in that, that they'd like to come forward? And on the other part?
Plan.
Nobody?
Okay.
So then let's, we'll proceed with the open workshop on the Boarding House. People who would like to speak, please come forward.
Does that mess Peggy up? I'm sorry.
She's glad to get out of here. What do you mean, mess Peggy? Better stuff to do.
Please give us your name and address as you come forward, if you'd like to speak, and.
I presume that will be me first.
All right.
I'm Harry Atwood. I live on Banyan Road, and I'm here to speak to the, what we presume or more commonly call it as a rooming house or a flop house. Typically, boarding includes providence of a meal. A rooming house is pretty much just use of a room on nightly or a little bit longer terms. And we've seen clientele come in from anywhere from a matter of days to a little bit longer. And as was reported recently, some of them have even been there close to a year. The most recent turnover was about a month, excuse me, for one of the people that were living there. And we bought in Central Beach, because it's zoned, a single-family residential community. And we like it that way, and we don't want to discriminate against anyone that may not be able to rent a place on their own. But I feel like there are places in Vero Beach that are already zoned to allow for apartments or rooming houses, and that over on Central Beach in a single-family residential neighborhood is not the proper place for renting of individual rooms. We have nice hotels over on the beach to allow that, and then we have rooming houses over in this area if they need that also. We see detriment to our property value by cars parked all over the yard, all along the street. And as I said, large gatherings on the weekend of individuals that are unannounced to us. Unlike your common family neighborhood, you know your neighbors. These transients, you don't necessarily get to know, because they're here one week or one month and gone the next. So we just find it concerning. I anticipate most of the residents of Vero Beach that are homeowners and permanent residents would find that alarming also, and would like to ask your consideration. And trying to set our ordinances so that we can allow the proper use of residential property and apartment-type living or rooming houses to be in the appropriate type area, so that you maintain the community feel and the residential family feel of a neighborhood versus turning it into. I saw one topic come out as housekeeping unit, where it allows multiple unrelated people to live together. I've always known it as a commune, so, you know, if we want to become known as something like that, then I'd hate to see the sign that says, "Welcome to Vero Beach." Welcome to our humble commune, or anything like that. So just ask that you consider protecting the homeowners and our rights and our property values also. And to speak to this gentleman's comment, there's also another real estate company that's advertising houses in Central Beach by the week also. That's very well-known. And as stated, that doesn't necessarily mean that they are doing anything illegal, but I can only presume if it's being advertised that way, it's probably being rented that way. So I thank you for your time.
If you hold on, can I just ask you a couple of questions? Some of the other board members like to ask you questions.
Sure.
My particular question was, the problem you're having, is it an adjacent problem to your property?
Yes, it is.
Immediately close.
Yes.
And if, is the owner ever onsite? Does the owner live in that house in this particular case?
No, she does not. She lives in a house also in Central Beach that she rents out four to four different. Four men live in the house with her, and she rents out by the room also. But she comes by periodically. We anticipate to probably pick up rent or to show the house to the next prospective tenant.
Because she doesn't live there at all on this property, that probably makes the condition even worse. If the person was on the property themselves, the owner of the property, had to live on the residence before he could do anything at all. To me, I lived in a community one time where they wanted, they were trying to promote a different, little different situation, where they were called MPDUs, moderately priced dwelling units. And therefore, you could have a larger home, but you had to subsidize it by having somebody else live on the property to integrate back, this is a few years back now. And the thing was, the resident had to live on the site, then they could rent out a unit. Now, in the short term, we're talking about long-term rentals, right on the property. And that was part of the process. Then the person that lived there wouldn't put up with the same things, because when you live over here and it's happening over there, it's not nearly as much. So if we, is there any way enforcement might be part of our enforcement process that the person has to live in the house to get any kind of rental situation? I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, that's why we're here, because the problem with our current ordinance is, we will point out, we don't believe it's constitutional, the way it's written, it just deals with number of people. It doesn't tell how they're living together, doesn't tell you any of this. Certainly in writing regulations, we can put those kind of provisions in. And then it will be easier for us to enforce.
And for this individual, I wouldn't think so, since it is a female, and she's renting out to four other males that are living in that house, which I think is a four-bedroom house. And when you drive by there, there's just as many cars, as mentioned earlier, in her yard than is adjacent to us and adjacent to this gentleman also. I don't think the standard's there. But it may make a difference in longer term to where it could actually be enforced that long-term residents or something.
I know that I have empathy for you, because I don't believe that's the way it should be. And so, and therefore, I don't know how to get there quite yet. I think that's what we're going to try to work at here.
And as I understand, our ordinance is right now, where what she is doing is breaking the law, and she has been cited several times, but it continues to go on right now. So the fact that we're not even enforcing our own ordinances is a bit of a concern also. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
How long, do you know how long she's been renting it?
She has been renting it probably about 15 years. And I know she was cited several times prior to us buying our property and moving there about a year and a half ago. And it quit, and when we bought the property, we were told she was renting, which was fine, because we knew it was a single-family residence and that it would be an individual or a family there, not a bunch of different transients coming in and out. And one of the eye-openers was if you search that address on Google, one of her recent residents was arrested twice in two-month period for illegal activities. So that's just an example of some of the people that may be living next to you that you're just not aware of, which you can't control that. That happens everywhere. But still, it's not like you get to know your neighbor and build the neighborhood bonds. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak?
I'd be glad to add a little bit more.
Feel comfortable.
David Hunter, Eagle Drive. The situation this gentleman was describing on Banyan is very similar to what we're experiencing. You might not call it a rooming house, but you have different people who are not necessarily related, coming in there, dividing up a house, living in different rooms, and staying there for sometimes four days, five days, and then leaving. And the owner is not present on the property. So whether they're renting out by internet or using that kind of a vacation rental as a screen, you could consider this to be a rooming house. They're coming and going transient people, a week at a time or less. We have no idea who they are. Often, they abuse the neighborhood and have parties at night, like a person or a group would, that was not planning to respect the neighborhood. And this house that I'm referring to on Eagle Drive is not the only one. In our immediate vicinity, we had one this summer, or I mean, not this summer, two, three months ago, on the corner of Fiddlewood and A1A, which is just a block, half a block from me, that the police were called in, and there were nine or 10 fraternity boys that were staying in that property and throwing beer cans and standing out at night, making a terrible racket and scaring the neighbors. And we know, I know the police were called in at least once. And that was a second one. And as far as the internet, I mean, I've got, anybody can go on the internet and look for Central Beach, and you'll find all kinds of listings being advertised. Now, those should be considered solicitations, just like a streetwalker, walking on the street would be a solicitation. And I don't know why code enforcement couldn't follow up with the local phone numbers that are provided and ask, oh, are you renting by the week? And if they say, yes, we're renting by the week, then go ahead and slam them. But that seems to be too aggressive a policy and would scare off our friendly tourists. I'm sorry, Tim, but I've got to be honest about this, that that does not seem to me, after a year and a half, to be an adequate response, to say that we don't want to scare off the friendly tourists. These are not friendly tourists. These are invaders in our neighborhood that do not belong there. We live in a residential neighborhood, and we are not a Motel 6. So they should not be there. And anyone who's a rental agency that is doing this, or a landlord who owns the property that is doing this, is in flagrant violation and disrespect for all of our community, and is ruining our property values and our neighborhoods. So, thank you.
David, I would like to comment. I agreed with you until you went after the tourist. This person didn't, is unknowing in a lot of cases. And I'm not talking about the one that were throwing beer cans out in the street. That type of tourist, we don't need anyhow, okay? But the general tourist, the family that comes here, they may not actually be knowing that they're moving into a neighborhood, that they're illegal. And therefore, I don't think we can take our, the feelings we have out against them. I think the person that's in knowing what they're doing and knowing that it's in violation of our rules and regulations, I think those are the people that have to be made accountable for what's occurring. And I think our discussions today, at least as far as I can direct, will lead us to the point where that's the person we'll try to direct the situation to, and not those that are visiting our community.
Oh, I agree. I mean, many of these people are innocent, the ones that are renting off these websites, coming from Texas or California or wherever, they're innocent. They do not have any idea that they're violating our conditions. And they're being attracted by these beautiful, what it says in the website, beautiful residential community, steps from the beach, steps from the museum, steps from the tennis courts, all of this, it's right here. I can show you copies of it. They're advertising our neighborhood and turning it into a commercial opportunity and attracting foreigners, tourists. Yes, we have hotels, that's what hotels are for. And I would love to have the tourists, but I'd like them to stay in hotels and not in our residential neighborhood. If they were on your property next door to you on Riomar, I don't think you'd be very happy having that turned into a motel.
That's correct. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't think he was talking about throwing the renters in the huskow. I think he was talking about the landlords and the rental agents and the bad guys, yeah.
Yes, sir. Paul, land this one more time. I just wanted to make maybe a constructive note also. We, just that there was a minimum rental time period. note also. We, just that there was a minimum rental time period that residential properties could be rented in the city. I also wanted you to take into consideration, when you're looking into possible other alternative requirements, that there be a requirement that only the entirety of the property in a single-family residential area, you could only rent the entirety of the property. So that the lease would only have a required time period, but it would have a subject matter of the entirety of the property. So that single units or single rooms inside the various structures couldn't be rented out as well. That would be an issue that wouldn't be dispositive based on any of the gender, sex, religion, any of those things, that would come under strict scrutiny by the court system. But you'd be looking at something that could be equally applied across the board. You know, did you rent for the minimum time period? No, you're in violation. Did you rent the entirety of the property? No, you're in violation there. It's a little more straightforward, easier to prove, and would have for your administrative hearings down the road, less time and investigation required to determine if there was in fact a violation. Just appreciate if you could take that into consideration when making any modifications to your existing statutory language.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Question for Tim. Since there seems to be pretty much undivided agreement that these kind of operations that we just discussed are not legal, is it not the case, then, that any active agent that is promoting and advertising these activities, if that is not aiding and abetting an illegal operation, I don't know what is?
Well, I'd like to turn our attorney on that. We, I mean, our code does not get into that. Wayne, would you like to add? I'm not re-practicing law here.
You mean, I have to?
Somebody would.
Those of you that don't know me, I'm Wayne Command, City Attorney. Joe, the problem is, what, the legislature has kind of hamstrung us. Now, we're talking about, what we were here to talk about today is not really short-term rentals. What we were talking about, wanted to talk about is boarding houses, rooming houses, the issues that have to do with these long-term rentals that are creating problems in residential neighborhoods. But the short-term rentals, the legislature has kind of hamstrung local governments, because they basically said, "You cannot adopt rules to regulate short-term rentals." They want tourists to be able to come down and live next door to you in somebody else's house. Unless you have existing rules on your books, then they're grandfathered in. That's what we have to work with, the rules that we already have. We can't change them. We can't add to them. We could delete them, you know, we could repeal them, but obviously, we don't want to. So, Tim is requiring to work with what we have on the books when it comes to the short-term rentals. And unfortunately, they were drafted quite a few years ago, and they're not, you know, the epitome of
Clarity.
Clarity or anything. So, we do the best we can. By matter of practice, I think in enforcement, they limit it to, if it's more than 30 days, then it's not considered a vacation or short-term rental. But if it's less than that, and there's evidence of it, and remember, you have to prove your case when you cite somebody. If it's enabled to be enforced, then it will be enforced. And I think that's what, they do the very best they can with the short-term rentals. There is so much of it going on, apparently. I mean, there's, what do you have, two officers?
I have two officers, and there's a lot of other things going on in the city that they're dealing with. And yes, we do look at the internet. We send letters to people. But this is a very difficult thing to get a handle on. So, we go by, you know, we pointed out, we go by a complaint basis. We do that. But, you know, since we have to treat the simmer, we cannot put any regulations in place to treat them differently than any residential. It's very difficult for us to go beyond that.
But to go to your point of maybe realtors that are doing this, if we can see that they're doing it on a specific property, Tim and I were talking about this earlier, perhaps more aggressively going after the realtors that are doing this as the agent of the owner. And cite them and see what happens.
How can you go after the agent and not the owner?
Well, we go after both.
Go after both.
We go after both, but he's right. If, yeah, it's just like if somebody were doing work on the property.
Is it because they're licensed, or have professional standards?
No, because they're doing, because they're doing the renting out.
Yeah.
Well, I understand that. But if you can't go af, you were telling us why you couldn't go after the owner, so I don't know how.
Oh, no, no, no. We'll go after, but we normally go after everybody we can find that's eligible.
He's normally licensed. They have a license to protect, but could be reasonably.
To be frank, it doesn't seem like you're going after anybody.
No, they are. We get the cases.
I want to show you.
Question. The, could we put in an ordinance, a statement that advertising would be a violation?
No.
Why not?
We are stuck with the rules we have. We cannot change those rules.
We're not talking about changing anything except enforcing the existing laws that were in effect as of that time.
If the legislature has said you cannot adopt any rules having to do with short-term rentals.
We're not talking about short-term rentals. We're talking about advertising.
You're talking about advertising short-term rentals.
No, not, we're not going to specify that. I'm trying to get you to be a yes lawyer for me, please.
No, I'm not one of those.
All right, then let's find another attorney that I can talk to.
Wayne, is there anything that we?
I'm going to try to keep you out of court, is what I'm going to do.
Wayne, is there anything open to us that we can put teeth into something like that?
No.
Anything? No.
Not on the short-term rentals. Period. We're stuck with the rules.
Get our legislature to reverse that ruling. Get our legislature to reverse that ruling.
Well, that's where I was.
Short of that, we'd have nothing.
I mean, you could do that. Now, in case you didn't know, Inverford County adopted an ordinance, basically adopting that philosophy of the legislature, that, hey, it's wide open for short-term rentals.
Wayne, do we, now there's, is this an exercise in fertility here? Are we going to be able to accomplish anything? So, if not, why are we?
Oh, no, wait.
We didn't come here to talk about the short-term rentals.
No, no, no.
That's short-term. We're dealing with.
Let's put it this way. The boarding houses come into play on a short-term, if they are doing the same thing in a boarding house. And you heard that. But if they're doing a later than that, then they're, they would not be under a short-term rental thing. But there are, I believe that they can cause, they can be violating, because that may be happening in some, but it has nothing to do with being a short, it's violating the short-term rental provisions of it. But the boarding house is a little different here. We have some leeway here to get into that. And clearly, if somebody's running a boarding house, let's say we allow it, and they're in a, and somehow, they're violating our short-term rental, we're going to go after them for that. You can't do that either.
My concern is everything I've heard on this, and since I've been here, which has not been that long, so therefore, I'm new here, is enforcement is always an issue.
Yes.
As to how we can enforce, and I'm looking at ways to put into our ordinances provisions that will simplify the enforcement. And if we put a provision in that a person advertising a violation of our existing city ordinances would be subject to a fine, he is violating by encouraging the violation of law. If we can put something like that, I don't see how that would violate what the state says.
But you're starting to get in, you're starting to get into a very touchy area of free speech. You're outlawing speech.
You're outlawing somebody who's advocating breaking the law? That's free speech.
I wouldn't go there.
You wouldn't go there?
I wouldn't go there.
Even if they're licensed?
Even, I don't care if they're licensed or not.
It's a question of solicitation of an illegal act. And you're saying that you can't restrict the solicitation of an illegal act.
We're not, remember, we're not talking about criminal things.
It is, it is equivalent. It's a civil violation.
Civil violation.
I don't care if it's criminal or civil. It is a violation of law and ordinance. And they're soliciting without authority. And by the way, I just wanted to add one quick thing. If you can use this shorter-than-30-days provision and say, "Oh, well, under those circumstances, the state has annexed our right-to-local-home rule over our properties." If you want to use that argument, then you can use that argument, and any boarding house can operate and only rent on a 29-day lease. And they can violate, anybody in the city can open a boarding house and just call it a short-term rental, and you can't stop them any more than you can the locals' short-term rentals. You see, so.
We're mixing apples and oranges here.
No, it's, that's what could happen. If we cannot stop vacation rentals of less than 30 days.
No, we can.
Well, we're not doing a very good job of it, because you've just told us you can't even go after solicitors.
Well, for one thing, we have finally moved forward on the one case that you brought up. We've got a strong case, and we moved forward on that.
And that's a year and a half after the fact.
I understand that. But we're doing what we can within the due process and the law.
You know, when we, when we're looking at definitions, the short-term rental versus boarding house, how are we differentiating that?
Well, we haven't differentiated it yet. However, we haven't got to decide how we want to define what a boarding house is and what other. We just heard a gentleman say, "One way is that you could only lease your whole entire house." I can tell you, other cities and states have allowed people to limit it to, you can limit up to one lease with one or two rooms in the house. It has to be within the house, doesn't create a separate unit. You can do that. Beyond that would be a boarding or a rooming house. And that's how they take care of it, allowing people to make some money with a border in their house. And then this time, and, you know, but it still has to be integrated, like a single-family unit. They don't have any separate kitchen facilities. They have that. That's how it's done. But it's, that's how you get into more specifics on that and how you want to handle that. And we have others. The problem you get into, once you put regulations in place, people know how to get around it. And I can tell you, from personal experience in the Keys, we had a tough ordinance, but people knew how to work around it. And it made it very difficult, because you can't just go subpoena records. We don't have that in there. You can't be doing that. You've got to rely on people letting you to get access, wanting to talk to you. And you don't know if they're telling you the truth, if they've been coached by the property owner. So, we do the best you can. And it's not a, you know, and we do it with the resources we have. I've got two code people. I get involved a lot in this, particularly in these kind of issues, because I understand. I'm upset. Do you think I want vacation rentals of my neighborhood? Do I want a boarding house? No. I would love to be able to wave the magic wand, and we just take care of it. But that isn't how we work in this country.
Jim, I noticed in your, let's get to the specific recommendations, and get off our soapboxes. I noticed in the definitions you have.
Do you have something, excuse me?
If I could for just a moment, just because of the various nature, the way that rooming houses have to operate, if we're going to, if you start going down that road, you might want to keep in mind also, Department of Revenue has some definite insight into this area as far as tax base. Our various hotels and things in the neighborhood, they have to pay much steeper taxes than a homeowner would be, because they're operating a commercial entity. And it might be something Mr. McGarry could take into consideration.
The problem is, most of these are exempt from those things, because they're just a few number of rooms. You see what I'm saying? They know how to play.
I think it's four units.
It is. You're exactly right.
Number. And as soon as you go from four to five, you cross in the definitions under the statute. But it's something to think of, that potentially, if they start to get larger, or the ones that start to put multiple tenants in multiple rooms, if you can get to five or more, now you're in a different place under the hotel, I think it's 590, if I'm, under the statutory language. And then you get into a Department of Revenue issue, where they can charge a much higher tax rate. The other thing is, if I recall correctly, that the federal case law has addressed insurance regulations on rooming houses, and they're significantly different than on single-family residences. These are things that we might be able to work with, that don't technically put us in harm's way with the state legislature. But being able to establish these requirements, if they don't have these things, maybe they're in violation of that, they might be in violation of something that we already have.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Obviously.
It's going back to getting around the city, I guess. But in your research, have you figured out what the legislative intent of this cockamamie rule that they keep falling back on was? Did they differentiate between multifamily and single-family? And are we going to be able to, with whatever we come up with, if we can, if we're allowed to come up with anything, are we going to be able to differentiate between our, I mean, R1, R1A, R1AA, have stricter rules in the, in the higher classified zoning districts?
I expect, I'm going to tell you the same thing your own counsel is going to tell you on that. Thing that you do is going to be subjected to judicial and legislative review at a later time. It's all going to be weighed in light of what's the case law say, as far as treating equal protection? Are you treating each party the same way? Are you treating the parties of your single-family residential units the same way as your multifamily? Or are you differentiating the way that you're treating any particular party, based on anything that's going on? And I think that the definition of family is what's causing a real stumbling block into your enforcement interpretation of laws that you have, based on the case law that I've been looking at. And I don't think there's any disagreement on that.
Well, going back to my, the first part of the question was simple. The legislative intent, what were they thinking when they are allowing people to put, you know, six, eight, 10 people in a, in a single-family neighborhood?
More than likely, and you're asking me to speculate a lot right here, but I'll go with that to some degree. From a tax perspective, you're bringing in more tourists into the state, and you're providing a tax base. I don't know if that was the intent, but it sure looked like it. I mean, you're putting multiple people into a single-family residential unit into an established neighborhood, and when we're packing them four-deep, and each one of those rooms is renting, at least according to the one that I'm dealing with, the room that's for rent is renting at a similar rate as a single studio apartment on the island. And then you're multiplying that times four on one lot, that you would never permit to have four studio apartments on a lot that size. You're fourfold their income level on one lot. So, the return on the investment is four times what it would be otherwise. And I think that's.
And we're talking sales tax here.
Well, we're talking sales tax. We're also talking about development, cost of development, cost of operation, cost of insurance. All of these things taken into consideration from an operational perspective. The landowner is saying, "Well, I can rent each one of those three or four bedrooms for the same price as you would normally get for a studio apartment." Well, they've got to have multifamily. They've got to have commercial insurance. They've got to have several, you know, meet fire codes and that type of thing, pay taxes.
No, I'm waiting to get back to the ordinances proposed.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to, okay, no, he's correct. And I think under the boarding house thing, we've got some room here to get into some definitions. And that's what we need. The vacation rental thing, we're going to deal with as we can. But on the, we do on the boarding house. So, here's some of the suggestions, and it was brought up already. The first thing is our family definition, the way it's done, it gets back, same as boarding house, deals with unrelated persons. This has some problems in the constitutional from everything, from right of privacy, to equal protection, to a bunch of others, particularly in a modern society, where we have a lot of different kind of household units that are operating together, that may not be blood-related and that. And you're discriminating against them. And then you're also discriminating people that need reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act, and under the Americans with Disabilities Act. That needs to be taken care of. We have what you call sober houses come in. I've dealt with them. These are basically for alcoholics or drug addicts that are doing through recovery phase. We've had at least one come in. They're not licensed by the state, but they're protected under the, under law. So, basically, as long as they operate them with less, with seven or less, or less than seven people, and they're longer terms than 30 days, I've not had a problem with them, and I haven't gotten any complaints about it. We make them operate under those rules. So, I think what we need to make some changes in the definition of family, to get rid of those discriminating factors. It has to be a single-family, integrated single-family unit. That will take care of it. And also put in provisions for reasonable accommodation. We can come up for a language that deals with that. The big question you want to have, and I think that was brought up with the boarding house, and I'm starting with family unit first, because that would affect the boarding house, is do you want to allow anyone to rent rooms, any of the rooms within a dwelling? Okay. I mean, I don't know if there's a legal issue there.
Yeah, no.
Well.
A lot of, as Tim and I both know, we've looked at a lot of different jurisdictions. And a lot of jurisdictions do allow a homeowner, or a person that has possession of a single-family residential property to rent out rooms, but maybe limit it to maybe just a couple of rooms, no more than two rooms. That's kind of common. Not everybody allows it.
And clearly, they have to be long-term. And we can talk about whether we can put kind of language in that deals. We don't want them transient. And we may not be stepping on vacation rental, and I'll talk to Wayne about that. But the intent is, even if you were to rent out the room, you can't be renting it out for short-term, people coming in for a week, and, you know, so.
Of course, keep in mind, the way that Tim has to look at it too, is how can he enforce something?
Yes.
Remember, code enforcement, I was just, can't just barge into somebody's residence and start looking around. I mean, and there are possibilities for things such as administrative search warrants, but those all take expertise to get done, and we just don't have the staff.
That's why I was relating to the advertising as evidence of illegal behavior, illegal activity, and using that as a basis to get a search warrant.
Well.
Or to get, use that as a basis for, you know, identifying that this is a violation.
Unfortunately, judges don't necessarily see zoning violations as a real big deal.
I understand. Not worth it, so.
So, but they do use. So, but they do use advertisements, they do it all the time as evidence to, they confront the people with it that say, hey, you're advertising this, and they do get compliance or.
And that's what we use. I mean, we try to get that, that way, and it certainly leads us to a suspicion, a probable cause, that we can start further investigation on that kind of thing. I, I think one thing we could also look at, you may want to limit, if, if you do allow to have any rental room, it could be, you have to, the owner, whoever, has to be on the property of itself, and that limits the use of the property. I mean, we did talk about that. But I, even if you were to say you can only lease the entire unit as suggested, people can go to sublease, do a lot of other things to get around it. It is not, you know, it's not a full fail-safe kind of thing. I mean, it sounds good and all that, but as Wayne said, the biggest thing is enforcement here. But clearly, we need the, the instrument and the mechanism that we can move forward on this because I don't like the situation. No matter what you, people may think, we, the staff is not happy with the situation. Our hands have been pretty well tied here, but we want to move forward on this and take care of it.
And one of the problems we're up against, I don't have my statute book in front of me, but specifically administrative search warrants are not available for, I know, owner-occupied residences.
That's correct.
And it may even include tenants. I'd have to look at the statute.
Now, I'm aware.
We may not even be able to use them in these type cases.
I think in commercial properties, but I don't think this would, yeah.
I'm aware that, that the licensed real estate profession has a code of ethics. And I, and in, I know in the Northeast, in Connecticut, Rhode Island, and Massachusetts, they basically would, a complaint against a real estate agency who is violating, who is advertising something in violation of a local, would be subject to discipline by that licensing organization. I would suggest you think about going in that direction as well.
Good point.
Secondly, I noticed in your definitions here, you're starting with family, then you're going to dwelling.
Those are only selected ones in the current code.
Okay, these are all in the current code?
Yeah, and we would change those. I was just putting those so you could see what the language.
All right, this is, this is language in, in the current.
Yeah, those are not proposals.
Oh, okay.
We'll work on those because we needed some direction in you on that. So, what we were saying is, we can define the family, the big issue, you want to allow any renting? If not, then we can get into the boarding house. Clearly, a boarding house is going to be anything beyond that except, uh, that you're renting out, and that would, you know, we would tailor it to be that.
Well, it seems that the.
No, no, go ahead.
Yeah.
I think you're right on.
The, the, the criteria has to include things like a number of unrelated individuals, which you have in here. The definition of what a dwelling unit is, which you have in here, we could, we could argue, I think.
No, no, the unrelated is not.
That's the problem.
We're trying to get around.
You're trying to get around. Well, you keep listing it, that's what's in here now as individuals.
Right, then that's the problem.
Okay.
We, go ahead, Wayne.
Uh, just, the, the problem is, especially when you, when you end up in court on these things, and here's where most of the litigation has come from, it's really usually based on the Americans with Disabilities Act or the Fair Housing Act, where persons that are entitled to some kind of extra protection, such as you could have a group of 10 disabled persons that could move in right next door to you in your single-family residence, and the city would have to make an accommodation for them. And the problem is, they're not related by blood or marriage, they just happen to have a disability. But under ADA, you have to make an accommodation for them in your zoning rules. So, that's one of the things we're trying to fix too.
And if you look, we have, I got a definition, if you look at the end, we have what they called shared living residence. Look at that. If you're 55 and older and five unrelated, now, tell me how we could go to court and defend why we have that and, and.
Well, what we do have is a definition of the kind of occupants, what, what kind of land uses can be used in any given zones. We have a single-family or a residential zone, which allows certain kinds of things in it.
And we certainly can exclude boarding houses.
Exactly.
That is not at the issue here.
So, that's fixing the boarding house definition is one of the big things.
So, if we fix a boarding house definition, you know, in a way that satisfies the legal requirements of doing so, then we can exclude them from a residential area. And we want to make a definition of boarding house that is, that's acceptable, that will identify the particular problems we are dealing with here in, in these complaints we've been receiving.
For instance, for the house that we've been dealing with, the one on Banyan, they, they have more than unrelated people, clearly, but since we believe, and, well, we pretty strongly believe and firmly believe that it's a, it's a legal problem to use that definition, to enforce it that way, we've gone into the house and looked how they lived and all. It's like a single-family house, except they have locked, secured, and all that. So, it, from all intents and purposes, you know, they didn't have separate kitchens, even though they may have a microwave, it would have been, we didn't have enough there for us to say, you're flat-out not operating as a single-family house, that you're operate, you know, that you have a single kitchen they're using and all that.
And we, we've looked at this issue of renting, renting, actually renting, having leases for each room, which is kind of indicative that it's a rooming house.
So, that's what we need to move forward, is just to have this down, that we can easily state that, that we don't have that kind of issue. And that's what's been holding us up on this one.
So, you could define, you've got your definition of dwelling here. A, a person has a room that has access to a bathroom and has a microwave or something in that room would be defined as a dwelling, and therefore you couldn't have any more than two rooms.
No, it has to have to complete units. It doesn't, see, it wasn't enough to define itself as a unit. That's why the leasing thing about how many rooms you could lease, or no rooms you can lease, is an easy, at least easy from paper for us to do. Doesn't mean they couldn't try other things to do that, but is a much, you know, that pretty well states what you can do and can't do. And right now, we're not at that point because of the problem of throwing out the, of describing a boarding house as three unrelated, more than three unrelated people living together, and that's a boarding house, see? There's probably a lot of boarding houses in the city with more than three unrelated people living together there.
Well, can you define a boarding house as a, a dwelling that advertised as a boarding house and being advertised for, for a short-term or single individual rental?
Well, this is, see, these are.
And they can't be, can that be part of your definition?
These people, actually this place has, actually, they're not any good.
Doesn't matter. I'm not talking about this, I'm talking about advertising, advertising for use of the facility at a price for a length of rental that, you know, shorter than a particular point in time or, or whatever. Would that be?
Well, no. Don't mix with short-term. Don't mix.
I'm not, I'm just saying, advertising in violation of, I understand, just advertising for rent, a portion of a dwelling in a residential area has a criteria for definition of a boarding house. That's all I'm asking. Could that, would that work? Anything like that?
Well, it's just, we, we would define boarding, and basically, we already have a, a ordinance that says boarding houses are not allowed in single-family residential.
I understand that, but now it's a definition of getting to what a definition of a boarding house is, it doesn't say unrelated individuals.
Yeah, it's, we've looked at a ton of other jurisdictions and how they've defined these things.
It's usually by the, the rooms they're letting inside a dwelling. You're not creating additional units, you're creating, you're splitting up a dwelling unit into separate secured areas that are not necessarily defined as an independent. That's the easiest way to do it. And I'm not saying we can't look at a probable cause that they're advertising that, okay? Because it is different vacation rental.
That's part of your enforcement case.
And we can look at that. But I think if you define it that way, it's much easier and we can put a, the staff can go at it and do what it has to do.
Wayne, one of the questions I'd like to have for you is, what, most of the times in the studies that I've lived, have situations like this, a lot of times they use safety was one of the big valves that opened up to stop certain things from occurring. They always should, health and safety of the people living there. Is there anything with, within our code we could address being a sa, health and safety issue? Number of exits out of the home, not enough bathroom facilities?
Well, see, in conjunction with these zoning regulations, we have building codes and housing codes that say how many square feet you have to have per person.
Right.
Building code deals with your exits and entrances. So, I think we're pretty well covered there.
And they don't pass that threshold. That's, that's the real problem, uh, under the standard housing code. And that's what we can use on that.
Well, another, I'm just trying to find different approaches to it, to what we have here, and they, they may not be very creative or whatever.
Well, I have another thing to throw out to you that you might want to consider too. So, one of the issues, and so we moved, one of the issues brought up had to do with the additional traffic and parking out there.
Parking.
So, we're suggesting, uh, and this, this would have to affect all, all residential, is to, uh, would no longer allow parking on lawns and other unimproved areas on a property. That will make it more difficult. It may create some problems on this, but that is something a lot of cities have, and we have not done it. It does have an impact.
We actually have a provision in our code that says you can park on your lawn.
Yes.
Believe it or not. Well, we also have.
Do we restrict the time on how long that's, is for?
How would you have a party?
As much as I.
Well, no, you would have.
Make exceptions.
We'll make exce, we would make exceptions. We've looked at a couple of ordinances.
Last one I looked at, make an exception for four times a year. No, no.
Let me ask you, if they're, they're drawing revenue from these additional, um, people staying in the unit, and under whatever circumstances they're staying, we have the ability to tax different properties at different rates? Income's one of the ways you tax a property if it's generating income, is that a door, don't go there at all?
Well, no, no, I'm not saying go there, but they don't fit under, if they're doing, if they're not violating the law, they're not doing short-term rentals. They're having at least six month, you have to have at least six months so they don't pay a bed tax, okay? Uh, if they're not doing that, they don't have to do a business tax because they don't have separate units here that they're doing, so they're not paying any more business tax. They fall out of the DPR because they usually have fewer, so they're, they don't, they fall under the radar. We don't have any provisions to necessarily handle them.
What about their insurance then? If you accommodate their insurance company, a bit of more than multiple people living in a home, the insurance company that's providing insurance for that building may change that regulation. It's another door you might open. I mean, just saying.
You can be self-insured.
Well, you can, but not if you have a mortgage, you can't usually, um, so.
Yeah, we're not going to know who their insurance company is.
Well, I mean, you're, you're making the enforcement much more difficult and invasive when we start getting into their, you know, where they get insurance.
Some jurisdictions have tried to actually require landlords to register their property if they're going to rent it out, but then again, you're adding more administration.
I mean, that's another route to go. I mean, there's been talk about doing that, but how far do you go with permits for, for that? That is not.
It seems like we're trying to, I'm trying to create a bureaucracy here around an issue.
That's what you're doing.
And to close the, the situation that shouldn't exist.
Well, I, I think both, we, we believe that with changes in these definitions and that, and some direction from you all, that we, we would make a big bite into this. And we'll figure out how we would enforce this immediately for existing conditions. But I, that's what we're looking for, some direction here.
The biggest complaint that I've personally heard from a couple of sources is, is the parking issue with, and actually, we sent pictures of, you look at the property and there's cars parked all over the place. And, um, I said, we've found several good versions of, of no parking in the front or side yards on, if you're on a corner lot, including the side yard, which we call a front yard.
Well, I, I.
Two front yards.
Yeah, two front yards.
But, um, and providing for exceptions. For one of them, I saw one, no more than once a week. Uh, one, the last one I saw was no more than four times a year for social gatherings or what have you. But then, of course, what you're doing is you're moving the parking in the front yard to the street. And so, my question to somebody was, well, so now what do you want? No parking signs on the street too? And their comment was, well, we'd like those better than we'd like the cars, so.
Well, I mean, as a, as a land use planner, I think these things in single-family neighborhoods create their own problems outside the parking. I'm just, the gentleman, they brought it up on vacation rentals about having people you don't know in your neighborhood and all that. That's the whole idea of the stability of the neighborhood. I, I mean, if we could do it, we would probably have six-month requirements on that to make stable neighborhoods. I don't think the stability of neighborhoods there without addressing the, the whole issue here. Because I, I think when you have multiple rooms being rented out, it leads you to, with, eh, really no leases or leases, they're come and going, even though they're saying we're staying there long-term. I think it just encourages that kind of thing, and I don't think that's, I would recommend that we be a little more stringent on this kind of thing, but be fair to the property owners in this. And, and I think the parking's not a bad way to go because it is an easier thing to enforce than probably everything else in this.
You, you would provide exceptions to the people who provide services to the property, I presume?
Oh, right. I mean, that, or.
One, one place where I lived, actually, it was outlawed to park in your front yard, and they made an exception for washing your car.
Right.
I've lived in a town where you couldn't park in the street after, say, 10 or 11 o'clock at night. Yeah.
Mark, Mark, excuse me, Mark had an idea earlier. I thought, is there, have we looked at not recreating the wheel again, inventing the wheel, but is there other municipalities got to be having some of this similar problem?
We've been looking at, we've got them all over the country. I got attorney general's opinions from New York and, and Los Ang, I mean, California. We've been looking all over the state. We got lots of ordinances to look at.
We got lots of them to pick from.
Yeah, that's a lot to pick from.
Have you seen any that look better than ours? Have you seen any that are close?
Rest my case.
What's the possibility of just not allowing rental of, uh, in, uh, rooms under this boarding house provision? You mentioned that, Ms. Congressman.
Sir, could you, could you plug to the microphone, please?
Sorry, I thought this was a workshop session.
Well, it is, but they need you on the radio.
We've still got to hear you.
Anyway, the question is, why not just restrict any rooms to be rented out? I mean, he mentioned that in some communities, they do allow one room, but if you get into two or three, then it becomes a, a rooming house. Why not just establish a provision before the state legislature overrules us on that one, that you don't allow any rooms to be rented out as in residential neighborhood? I, I assume that we still have the right to, to mandate that, even though we're not talking about vacation rentals, we're talking about rooming houses. I don't want a rooming house in my neighborhood either, and I live in this Central Beach area.
Well, that's kind of what we were talking about, redefining rooming house or boarding house as to the number of rooms that could be rented out, and once you go past that, it becomes, by definition, a rooming house.
Yeah, if you have a definition, yeah, that you cannot rent anything less, a subset of a dwelling. In other words, a dwell, you can only rent a full dwelling when you are, when you're renting. That's one thing that definitely should be in there.
I mean, is that.
Nobody, no individual or group of people can rent anything less than a full dwelling.
But if you're, but if you're, if you're a, just say you're an elderly lady and you want to make other income to meet your needs, you want to rent out a room, now you're, you're stopping that woman from.
Well, I mean, that, that's a true statement. So, the question is, you might want to at least leave, like, one room could be rented out. That gives the property owners some flexibility, particularly in those cases, uh, you know, really, I, I think that would hold up.
It's the abuses that's causing the problem.
That's it. And I think when you start to get into multiple rooms, that's where the abuse problem starts.
I can see, you know, there's a way to get, but anyway, just, that's the direction, I think, going is to, you've got your definition of a dwelling unit, dwelling.
All right.
And you say rental, except with the following exceptions, rental of an individual, of any, anything less than a dwelling unit will not be allowed with the following exceptions or something like that. Make them apply for, in other words, you can say that if a person wants to rent a room out to an individual, they have to come in and get a permit. I mean, make it a simple process. I know that's adding administrative, but it allows a, a way of regulating it. And that's, you look, I'm more concerned on enforcement. How do you do enforcement of some of this stuff?
What, the conclusion we have to come to today, though, I think, is what do you want from the board today to allow you to move forward? Give me a particular.
Well, basically, first is I think we all agree the definitions need to be revised. Then the question came.
Do we agree on that?
I think we all agree that. So then the question is, it really had to do with, can you rent out anything less? Or is it the entire unit? I, I need some direction in that because that will be what we're going to use for the, for the benchmark to go into a boarding house. Okay? So the question is, do you want to allow at least one room that could be rented out to?
I'd like to interject here that the existing rules in Vero Beach, when I came here 10 years ago, they had some grandfathered apartments that were on larger properties. You, you probably know this, Ms. Minus, that, you know, Riemar and some other places, they have, even here on my area of Central Beach, there were some smaller apartments or units, single units attached to a larger home. Often, it was a maid's quarters or something like that. And they were traditionally or, or frequently rented out as a separate unit. But that the overall premise for Central Beach and for Vero Beach, Beachside, was that there were no additional rights to rent out properties. I was told when I applied for building permits to expand my property, the building office told me, you are not going to put a kitchen or any facility in that additional expansion of your property that will allow it to be rented out. I was told that.
No, but that creates an additional unit. That's why you have it. And we look at that, David, and basically, when we're talking about renting a room, you're not going to be able to create a kitchen or all that. It all has to be integrated in the house. I mean, they're going to use the common kitchen facilities and all that. They will not be able to create a separate unit under this kind of thing because that, we don't allow that. You're exactly right.
Because the way a single family is defined is it's one single dwelling unit. And if you look at the definition then of a dwelling unit, it says if it's got all those things that make up a dwelling unit, including a kitchen, bathroom, you know?
It's a duck.
Eating and living facilities.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I, I don't think we're making any progress here. I think we're going around in circles where, you know, we're kind of throwing out ideas and they're saying, you can't say that, you can't do that. My personal opinion is that in a, in a single-family residential neighborhood, especially an R1A or an R1AA, you shouldn't be able to rent out one room. I mean, I would no, no longer consider renting out a room in my modest house to, than, than burning it down. It's a single-family residential neighborhood. And, and to have rentals within rentals possibly, or, or even rentals within your homestead, what, what's that do to your tax situation if you, if you rent a, a room in your homestead property? I, I think we need to give them some direction as to whether we think these kind of activities should be allowed in a single-family residential neighborhood. And, and like I said, whether we can discriminate between R1, R1A, R1AA. And then let them come back to us with what they think they can do because we're just not getting anywhere.
Well, I think most of the, right now, the boarding house, any kind of boarding house can't be in any of our residential neighborhoods. They have strict, any of them, multifamily and all that.
Where are they restricted to? You've got short-term, you've got long-term, you've got vacation rental, you've got boarding house, you've got rooming house.
Where the boarding house is restricted to, where can they go?
Nowhere. We don't, we, we have that provision.
Well, we have them on Eagle, we have them on Banning.
Well, it's a question of defining.
It's a definition.
Defining the boarding house. A boarding house would be, you know, this is direction, if you, my view is, a boarding house would be a building or a dwelling unit or multiple dwelling units where a subset of that dwelling unit is, is, cannot be rented separately. That's boarding houses. When, when there is a, a sub-rental of a dwelling unit, it becomes a boarding house, and the boarding houses are not allowed.
Okay.
Okay?
No, no, and that's.
Does that make sense?
No, no, that's, and we can go that route, I believe. Okay? That we could, and that means you restrict, you can't, you can't release any part of your house except the entire, that's what we talked about. I mean, we certainly could look at going that route. I'm not saying against it, but a lot of people, you know, there are situations where they would want to do that and, you know, but the question is, do you feel that's in the best overall?
Yeah, if we can do that, what's stopping us from doing that?
Nothing, but we changed the, we write the, I'm, I'm asking for direction here.
That's what I'd like to see.
But then you're talking about enforcement. So we do that, then how do you enforce that?
Well, the enforcement thing is like any kind of thing. I mean, we would have to, if we see somebody showing up at the houses, you know, it, it's always difficult. But people know at least on hand that upfront, that you can't do that. Now we have this kind of thing, it's just unrelated people, you know, individuals and that. It's a lot clearer.
That's true.
And a lot more fair, too.
Now, in those circumstances where there is a, a person who wants to, has a friend that wants to live with them, they want to charge them the rent because they need a companion or something like that.
Yeah.
Okay? Well, how can you put an exception in that would be manageable without having, without a big administrative burden?
I don't know. A lot of times they don't allow, that you can't have a secured area off and all that, but that means you'd have to be able to get into the, into the residence and all that without going through a permitting process.
Right.
To, to allow to do that. I mean, that's another possibility, that the out would be allow people to come in to get, to get a permit that would allow that, that it would allow us to inspect the house to look at that. And I have to check with Wayne whether we're stepping the grounds, but we're talking about, we're not talking about short-term rentals here, we're talking about the, you know, the use of the house for rent. I mean, we could look at that, but it does create a little bureaucracy to, to the thing.
Yeah, but we define, you can't sublet within a, within a dwelling unit.
Without a permit.
Without any length, for any length of time.
Well, if you do that, you could do that.
Right. And then have, have a permit for the, and the permit would be defined the kinds of things that would be permitted, the reasons why, or something like that.
Well, that makes it more difficult, other than, the other way to go is that you don't allow it unless they get a permit, and you're only allowed to do, you know, like, one room, that you could get a permit to do it.
Tim, what I'm, what I'm hearing unanimously is that we want to protect the integrity of our neighborhoods.
I agree.
And no one wants to see short-term rentals, no one wants to see boarding houses. Is there a way in which we can address this code by emphasizing more law enforcement so that we can cut, our code enforcement, so that we can cut that down and maybe, I don't know, I'm, I'm searching for a way in which we can interrupt this process, you know, and, and keep single-family residential areas intact.
Well, I think for, a, a major way is to get that, is get some new regulations in place that address this. And then we get the publicity, if people know about it, and it makes it easier for my staff without being on pins and needles of, that we know that we have a commitment from the city to do some of this stuff. Because, you know, we're in an area here, there's a lot of property rights issues involved.
Birdhouse.
You start telling, you know, telling people you can't do something and you're harassing people, or they think you're harassing them. So just clarifying various aspects of this code will make it easier for us to move forward on cases. It doesn't mean, it'll, it'll take a while, but certainly in the case that we're dealing with Banning Road, this would have been taken care of a while ago.
Right.
Definitely a while ago. The vacation rental's a little more difficult because of the straitjacket the state has placed on it, but I think we're trying to look at different ways we can do enforcement outside just our own efforts, as I said.
The complaint to, about the ethical nature of these violations to the Realtors Board, is there any teeth in that?
Well, we can do that, make a complaint. I don't want to say anything bad about realtors, so I'm not going to say.
Right.
But you wonder how that legislation got through. Think about it, okay? And I think a lot of, you know, there's a lot of money in this, and that's exactly what has happened in the state with the.
Lobbying, yeah.
So I, I mean, I mean, we could do that. I just don't think there, it would really amount, and I'm not trying to sell, some realtors would take that seriously.
I think you might be surprised.
Well, that's good to know. I shouldn't have said.
There are, having been in that business for a while, yeah, especially.
And we are a small community.
We're a small community and we're to get around. It's public.
Well, stop being cynical, guys, I'm sorry.
No, you're correct, you're correct.
Once you have a fine definition, once you have a definition.
It will make a big difference.
Then, then you can go to all the realtors, you can send a note out to them.
Okay.
And you tell them, if they are caught advertising in violation of the law, we will be notifying the Real Estate Board of your activities.
Okay.
And that way, that would, that would, might be a deterrent.
Okay, well, I'll talk, I'll talk to my counsel here to make sure that we're not getting ourselves in a deep.
I think, I think your parking violation thing might have some teeth to it also.
Okay, you don't, the, the concern I had, and I'm, I'm not against it because I think we have that, is it does affect everybody. So it's more.
Yeah, it's not like you're putting it on just these bad people.
No, you're, you're going to affect everybody.
You're putting it on everybody in the community, and we all got to wear the same jacket.
Yeah, so I think that's something you have to understand, that the people may come out of the woodwork when you do that.
Right.
And I think you will see some.
Yes, okay, but, you know.
But we're protecting the integrity of our neighborhoods.
Right.
We'll, we'll be darned if we don't, darned if we do, something.
But, but what we, what we have defined, David, is you shouldn't have to live with what you're living with, but, but we don't want to create a box that, that boxes everybody in from doing anything. I mean, then we become Big Brother, and you can't, some people get away with things because you don't want to put too much of a cloak on everybody. And I think that's where I'm at in particular. I don't want to box everybody in the community. And on the other hand, you shouldn't have to live with what I think you're living with.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, it would be okay. How about Wayne and I will put something together and we'll have another meeting before we go to a hearing on it, okay? If that's okay, I just want to be sure.
I don't think we defined a lot, actually.
No, that's what I mean. That's why I'm very careful about what I'm saying, that I think we need, but I think you need to have something that you can criti, you know, critique and make some changes in. And I kind of got.
But it makes sense to ask the realtors to come and participate in this?
I think it might be.
We could do that.
Why not?
I think it's excellent.
Sure, okay.
Not if we don't want to allow it at all.
Well, they can argue why or why or why not, and they can define why they think they should be violating city ordinances by advertising. I'd be happy to hear their comments on that.
What kind of ethical organization do they have, and are you enforcing what you say you are? I think that's reasonable.
Well, we'll send a letter to the association and invite them that we're having this meeting.
Subpoena them.
No. Come on.
They'll send their lobbyists.
Their lobbyists, they'll send their lobbyists.
If that's all right, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think we've got enough that we can start work on it.
You've got enough, okay, good.
Okay?
Yep, okay.
Moving right along.
Thank you very much for being here.
I think that's it.
And we're going to talk about plan development.
Plan development ordinance?
We have another ordinance to talk about.
Can we delay that?
Uh, they were, I think, we promised them they'd be here, if you don't mind, so we can keep this process moving forward. Excuse me, David, could you guys just? I'm sorry. Before you, we have a draft ordinance that, actually, it began about two and a half years ago. We were asked by Keith Kite and his consulting, he had a consulting group, Kim Lee Horn, working with him, to come up with some ideas. He was interested in developing the Hampton Inn and Suites on where Rita's is right now. And in fact, they already went through some rezonings on the property over there. And, but they wanted to come up with something that would allow some flexibility in their approach to put in a hotel at that location. And part of it was, is trying to make sure that they could get enough room density on the site. And under the, under current code or under our code, you can't transfer density from, if you, your lot has to be contiguous, you can't have a right-of-way splitting it. So one of the things that we looked at, if you, in this ordinance, would allow that density to, that it's part of the development, but it could be transferred off one part of the property and onto a, the other part. But overall, the property would still meet the, the requirements. We have specific purpose, the whole idea is we're looking at flexible design. So you, you look at that through. We have some specific standards that we came up for it. The, the process itself would be a conditional use process, they would have to make some standards. We had a more complicated process, but I think a simple conditional use process works here. We came up with some criteria, or I mean, some standards that have to be met, and there, a lot of those would be, those would have to affect any of these properties, the minimum size of these that'd be eligible. Now, we're talking about a specific project here, but this would be one that any type of project within the C1A or C1 could avail themselves unless you, unless if you're in the overlay district on the, on the barrier island. Probably a major thing that's going to be a little more difficult will be the plan wa, the plan waivers. There's a waiver provision in 62606, and this is where the flexibility comes in, which would allow you to weigh various aspects of the code in return for specific public benefits. And we have a bunch of criteria here. Now, this is, it's very flexible, the understanding is, they still have to meet the conditions for a conditional use, they still have to meet the standards for a site plan and all that. But in return for any of this flexibility for getting these waivers, they would have to show that there's a public benefit, more than just something that accrues to them as a property owner. And we feel, you know, Ms. Lyon and I have gone over this, and we feel this is, this is enough safeguard in there that this could be done. Of course, there's no, this, there, this kind of process is not as much certainty, but that is the whole idea, is to provide this flexibility, to get some unique designs in here, and they're able to take a property and create a, a focal point. And I think the whole idea, and Keith is here, I don't know if he wants to talk today because, but he's had these ideas, we've had these ideas of talking about a real dynamic changes in the Miracle Mile area, and this is the kind of thing you need to get some, at least some transit residential, so you're getting more people on the street and activity down there. So, I mean, we're, we've been elated, I guess, I told you, I think, a couple of weeks ago, I have no problem saying we've worked with them on this, it's been a close collaboration, but we didn't, we hadn't heard anything in a couple of years, and I didn't know it was dead, so we, we had to quickly get things together. So we've made some changes from the preliminary one that was done. That had some bonus incentives for FAR, but we decided that wasn't really needed for this kind of thing, that we went with the waivers, which is important, as well as the density transfer. So unless you have some specific questions, we would like to move forward to, to public hearing on this. You'll have to come back.
I do have some. Firstly, I think this is exciting, I really do. Under the purpose, you, you mentioned reduce energy consumption. Is this the kind of thing we're going to be seeing more frequently now?
Well, I, I think what they're going to do is some of the trade-offs are going to show, they're going to show LED-type design and other things on the property. If you look at what Park 24 did, they've got like a garden or their rooftop.
A green building, yeah.
Yeah, so they're going to have a lot of green building aspects, and I, Keith explained to me, I think their hotels are given awards for their green building type stuff. So there's a lot of incentive, and I think that's a public benefit that we have, that kind of thing.
Tim, we still have a number of people in the audience. Do you wish to speak on this issue? Does anybody like to speak? Feel free and comfortable to come on up and talk to us.
And Tim, this, we're dealing strictly with residential here, right?
No, this is all. This is commercial.
I see it in the, in the C1.
Well, C1A is the only one that allows residential.
Okay.
Okay, but C1 allows a hotel, so it's, it's a different, it doesn't.
There was something here about no retail sales or, they will be.
Well, this is in these type of developments. It's almost like a floating zone as a conditional use.
They have this kind of stuff in residential, too, but we're only dealing, I think, commercial right now, correct?
Right.
Right, and I didn't, I didn't see it specified.
We don't have, we don't have planned developments yet in residential. That is something we need to look at, we've talked about it. I'm sorry.
So, so what are we referring? It just says developments.
And that's, we're talking about these kind of mixed-use commercial developments right now.
Okay, right, okay, yeah, I see that.
Which may have a residential component in other type of, in other zones, but right now, we don't have that in this zone. Go ahead.
What was, just curious, confusing is that no retail sales will be involved here.
Where are you?
Page three, six.
Oh, okay.
That's drive-in, drive-throughs.
No, retail sales are personal driving.
Personal, all personal service drive-through.
These are drive-throughs. They're going to allow retail sales, we didn't want that. It's, if it's not worded properly, we will change.
So the whole sentence refers to drive-through.
Yeah, that isn't what we intended.
I had another, I had one other minor question.
Thank you.
Well, that's.
Keith Kite, Kite Properties, the plan developer of the future Hampton Inn and Suites that we're talking about. One, it may help with the previous workshop, I hope. But any case, you know, basically how it evolved four or five years ago when we tried But any case, you know, basically how it evolved four or five years ago when we tried to get this project started and obviously the economic world wasn't there and now we believe that it is from the studies that we've done, is it all goes back to the city's vision plan. And the vision plan has an overlay section, and if you pull up the vision plan on your website that y'all created, spent a lot of time with Tim and the previous urban planner, was to start getting mixed-use development, live, work, stay and play. Well, the way the current codes are basically written, it doesn't allow us to take the properties that we have and create what we want to do inside the vision plan of, of the city. And, and those are such things as the energy that you mentioned. As an example, we plan to have a solar pre-water, preheat water panels on the roof, taking advantage of some energy credits we get, ozone laundry washing, which is a great water reduction use. On the public benefit side, we're looking at on-street parking, brick-paved roads, additional lighting, you know, that's going to be going along to get people out on the street, to have dinner there, to shop there, to come to town.
Keith, I thought I heard you say those things were prohibited now. And then you talked about energy and I can't imagine any of those things being related or being prohibited.
No, in the plan development, the way our current sites work, the reason of, of the code that Tim is creating is so that we will be allowed to do all of these things. If we were to try and do this.
I see it as kind of like Ocean Park.
It's like a carrot thing. We're giving them more flexibility, like through the waivers and the density, in return, they can do this. They don't have to do these under the code, but they're wanting to do it, get a much better development out of it. And that's what.
Now, how's this, how are these waivers, which are, how are these waivers different than the incentives that we were giving at Ocean Park or at Homestead or how people know it, but, and during the interim ordinance?
Well, this, there's a lot more discretion on these. There's clearly more discretion because we haven't identified, we talk about what type of things that could be done, but we don't go into what kind of wave, you know, we talk about the classification waivers, but we don't go into, if you do so much this, you get, you know, you know, this much in return, that isn't done here. It's going to be the, the merits of the project when it comes in to show you what public benefits are accrued and what it does.
I apologize.
And that's it, and I don't want to get, we don't want to talk specifically too much about the project itself because it'll be a quasi-judicial project. So we're really talking more in legislative terms. With no attorney here, I'll have to. Okay?
Well, I would, I would like to express an opinion if I could right now.
Surely.
I've been in a few cities, older cities, that, similar to Vero Beach in some respect, that had Arcadian rules, okay? And they couldn't get people to come in and invest money into the city or into the, into projects because the rules would not let them occur. And in some cases, necessity of tax base became the issue whereby adjusting the rules and giving complete, actually, in some cases, I actually saw one city throw out the rules and said, "We want this project so bad, just tell us about the project. We'll make the rules for this particular," and they created an overlay district that included that property and two additional properties to make it work. And they, and they, and the whole community just fell in love with the project. It brought what the people wanted, but the rules and the government were holding them back. And what you want to be careful of, you can let this go and the wrong people can get their hand, and you can get something you don't want. So, so it, there has to be some guidelines, but you want the ability to let these kind of people come in because these are the people that make your community, in my opinion, special and unique and add, and add additional lifestyle and creativity and things to our community that we wouldn't otherwise get. And I've seen, I've seen, one's actually called a, it was a PDTR, and they were Property Transfer Development Rights. And, and these are used in different forms throughout the nation. And what, one of the, one place did was in Old Town Alexandria, I don't know if most of you know about, they, they used a lot of this there, if you're familiar with it.
I know that area very well.
And in some cases, in the more areas that you would, they would say you have to have so much green space and they couldn't come up with that green space to get the product they wanted, so, but they were allowed to buy a property one block away and it was made into a park and that supplemented the green space even though it was not attached directly to the property. And they allowed a lot of their other flexibilities to get the total thing. So in general, I'm impressed that we're going to try to go this way, but I also caution us that we can get some things we don't want if we're not cautious of, like, I don't, you don't want to open the door and let everything come in, but you want to get, to create, because we restricted ourselves because of the existing buildings here and you can buy all the pieces but one, and you can't do assemblies like you need to do.
Well, and I agree with you, Mr. Lawford. That's why, I mean, I usually like to have criteria that are real specific in what you get in return. It's much easier, but you lose a lot of the flexibility. And for us to come up with that would probably take us another year and a half after we, if you remember the overlay district, how long it took us to get to that, to get, so to see a project in front of you at that time, that's something you have to take into account and be very, you know, you have to be concerned about that to.
Yeah, Larry, this is a two-step process. We, we allow these kind of things and then they come to us with a site plan. And didn't you, didn't I hear you say this would be a conditional use?
This would be a conditional use and that means.
So that's even more, gives us even more flexibility.
Right. And there's nothing in here, and I think we have language that, that you have to give somebody a waiver. You're not required to do that and you have to make a finding that a public interest is being served in that. So I think, I think it's, I think it's, it's fairly good and, you know, and part of it is just seeing how this, this all works out. But it does give that flexibility, as you said, a lot of ordinances and even ours is that way. We don't have the ability to go transferring things around because, because we have these charter amendments. That's why we can't deal with densities too well because unless you can rezone it, and a lot of times even that will get you to what you need to make a project worthwhile, so.
I, I have a question, probably from stupidity. I assume that waivers are always issued by the, by this board?
Yes, yeah, and, and you brought up a good thing that I forgot to mention. Normally, let's say if this were a typical project coming in, they would be getting 18, they would get in these variances, but then you'd, but a variance you have to show hardship and all that, it's very difficult to get, much less go through all it. This is a much cleaner administrative process.
All right, that's why I question C under 62606.
Okay.
Where it says waiver criteria, "To be approved by the planning and zoning board, each waiver request shall comply with," all right, so the, I don't.
You do have to meet that because the point is, you can't be giving, you can't be waiving, you know, the regulations for the property, that doesn't, there isn't a public benefit involved. Then you get into real problems. That's why we have that language in there.
Okay, that language is to give us requirements that we have to meet in order before we can issue the waiver.
You would have to make a finding when they come in that they do. Of course, they're going to give the language of what they think, why they meet that, but you will have to make that finding. That's correct.
In some cases, it was waterfront improvements and other, all kinds of things they could make, you know, the.
I mean, this could be everything from in statuary and things that are, make it a more beautiful pedestrian, you know, entertaining.
Greenways.
You know, or even could be sort of different parking they could be providing. There's a lot of different, it's a very open-ended thing, but it'll go through with the process. It's a, it'll be a quasi-judicial process. The staff will be reviewing it, so you'll be getting our recommendation through this and then you will, you will have your hearing process.
They could have retention ponds and call it waterfront.
Will Public Works be reviewing it with traffic?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Well, no, they'll have to go through the, the analysis. That'll be one of the, as any project would.
Sure.
There's nothing in here, they have to meet our comp plan and all our concurrency. They don't get waivers from that kind of thing, no.
Let me ask this question on architectural review. When, when is it required or not required?
Well, we're working on the design criteria for that, which may, I don't know how long it's going to take. And I'm not holding up a project to, to, for architecture review. If it, if it comes, if a regulation's in place that a project like this has to be reviewed by the Architectural Review Commission, will be, but I don't believe it will be done by that time.